The combination papers got some things spilt on them this morning. I said, well, that's all right. I got other ones that rolled around on the floor of the truck.
Okay. You have a truck? I do. The point is they're here.
They're here. They were submitted on time and filled out.
Actually, I thought I didn't hand them in it. Can I say, I think you handed them in then. A few days went by. I said, no, I didn't hand them in then. I thought, where the heck did I put them?
On the floor. Of the truck.
Well, okay. Let's go with that. It's cleaner than where they were.
Just teasing.
Yeah, I had a good intent to drop them, I guess, but just didn't quite get there.
So Tom, you're good in one minute. Recording, so.
Uh, seven o'clock, we call the meeting to order. Um, any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, Lyle moves it. Any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call question of favor. Closed. Seeing none, it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the minutes of September the eighth. Any questions, errors, admissions?
Oh.
Okay, Judy moves them. Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, we'll call question of favor. Close. Seeing none, it's carried. Well, we have a little bit of a delegation. It's an employee recognition. We have two, but the first one is for Kent. So Kent, if you want, just come up. So Kent, um, there is a certificate for you. Kent's been with us for fifteen years. And, you know, he was probably theoretically with us probably for twenty-five years because he spent most of his growing up in the arena.
That's right.
And so he had an idea what the arena was like, but he's operative three for our crew right now. Holds his water certificate and pesticide application license, has been striving to take on more leaderships positions in the crew and and for a while there, you got kind of changed around a little bit when we had some changes in the town office. But anyway, you're back with us and out in the crew and have been there for all those years. And you'll receive a $300 purchase of continuous service award from the town. Thank you very much for all your time and effort and thank you for allowing him to participate with us all these years. And again, yeah, thanks, Kent.
Thanks, Kent.
Oh, thank you.
He never holds up.
No, and Kent always has been kind of the one that, you know, is willing to do whatever, you know, we've ever asked of him and it's really appreciated. It's nice to see our younger members participate in our, in our community and it's nice to see you raising your family openly and we really appreciate all you've done for our community. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
And then we had one for, for Channing. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to participate tonight. Channing started with us, you know, on May the 12th, 2015, so he's got ten years, like Kent's got five more on the Channing. And he started off in rec programmer. And in March 24th, he repositioned rec director and bio enforcement officer. Accidentally participates in organization all over. That's why he's not here tonight. He's, he's participating in, in some coaching, so uh, he'll receive $200 purchase of continuous service award from the town, so. You know, we really appreciate our, our long-term employees and, and it's great, like I said, to see that you guys all participate in our community, so thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Definitely welcome to stay for the rest of our meetings if you'd like.
Exactly.
I have yet to see a public employee stay. They might hold you, but I don't have the 20.
I don't want to be the first. Thank you, guys.
Anyway, that's great. Thank you. You know, like, like I said, we're very fortunate with custom rate of ways.
Awesome, please.
Okay, we'll move on to correspondent and information items. Lions Club sent us a concern of the advertising on the fence and it's it's kind of short and sweet, but Kim's got a little bit of information to, to share with us about.
Yeah, so bring in the concern forward. Chris is aware of the concerns as well and he had a brief conversation with me when he just asked me to pass along to council in regards to the letter that this year, uh, the advertising, both inside and outside of the pool, they equated to $9,200 is what we brought in from the advertising this year. And, uh, that goes along with the, uh, the direction that was given to try to generate the revenue out of the facility, not only from, uh, from those. So we've entered into some commitments with those advertisers for, I believe they're two-year cycles. And that are on those, I sometimes mistake those with the arena, but, uh, we do those the same. And, but on the other side of it, again, uh, the Lions Club also donate $500 to our operations every year, so. So we do make revenue. This is just an additional and the Lions Club has always been a good partner with that, so. One of the interesting sides of that conversation as well is, uh, the letter states that it detracts from the attractiveness of the site, yet, uh, the Lions Clubs were the, were the first ones to put signs up in those locations. So, uh, they had a lot, uh, signed advertising pool, uh, there and that's what kind of lent the idea of the advertising to begin with, so. So it kind of is taking full circle now that there's more there. There's some concerns from the club. If council would like to look at it further or look at it in the planning, or I can respond on behalf of council depending on your conversation. But I did want you to know some of the numbers and how we got to where we are.
So we're committed to a two-year.
I'll have to confirm 100%, but I believe that there is a commitment, like a contract for the advertising for a certain amount of time, so.
Yeah, and there's always, you know, no matter how you do it, there's a discussion like, I mean, originally we, we put on the side of the building, you know, the the name of the facility itself and then, you know, then the other two signs, you know, like Kim said, there was one that popped up on the fence from the Lions Club. And then there was the two big ones that were put on the end of the block, one on the end block on the east end and then one right by the entrance. And then the signage just goes onto the fence itself, so. You know, if we remove one sign, do we remove them all or do we, um, contemplate?
My original thought when you were doing the advertising was that it's going to go on the outside of the, on the outside of the pool. Because we had signage up there for I forget where it was when we first started, there was just one sign and that's where I thought the signage was going to go, when it was on the fence. It was kind of in your face because we haven't had that before. My thoughts now, though, if you, if you were to take those signs off, it's not like those are wood fence either. It might actually be a fence tube, so I'm I'm glad it's, it's the Lions Club that said it because I have a competitor up there, which is fine. But I guess it'll take some for me, it'll take some getting used to, but I mean, I that's not where I thought they were originally going to put it.
Cool, cool.
I appreciate the feedback they're giving us on it, but, um, like, I think there's a fine line between having your whole building being a pool advertisement and trying to revenue money or from advertising. It's so common now with public buildings, especially recreational ones that have advertising attached to them. Even the old rink, I remember as a kid, had a Coca-Cola sign on it, I think, and I don't know, like, I, I appreciate the revenue we get off of it and like if Chris can use that funding to improve the facility like that inflatable.
Yeah, they call that.
Weave it.
The weave it.
The weave it was what was purchased with the advertising.
Yeah, I think it can add to the facility.
Yeah, and, but on the other hand, you know, we do appreciate the Lions Club, you know, sponsoring, you know, that free Wednesdays or Thursdays or whatever. Fridays, Friday, sorry. And so, I mean, it's, it's not like we want to offend somebody from participating, but anyway, yeah.
I, I was going to say that I, I wouldn't worry about the, the Friday nights. This is, has nothing, we, that wasn't even brought up into this conversation, speaking as from the line point now. I explained everything that you talked to him about. You know, I guess the only thing, um, I tried to bring across to him, if there's any alternatives to where the placement is, that could be addressed maybe. But I explained to him that Chris was mandated to create revenue and he has done that very well. So, you know, he's doing his job, but I voted on as well, so. I, I would say you just need to respond to it.
One of the other things that was discussed was location of signage. Again, it was, it was also said that, you know, a whole bunch of advertising can be done on the north side of the building, but nobody goes in that direction.
Yeah.
So, uh, Chris has had quite a few conversations with not only the potential advertisers, but internally as well with us trying to figure out what the best location for. And that, you know, as Lyle said, it's in your face, but sometimes that sign on the fence when you walk through, that's the most expensive sign to get. Because that's the, and, and as we go forward and if this continues to be that and we're now full and people are vying for better spots, it puts greater value to it.
Another, oh, sorry, another thing that we could potentially do is kind of either defer it or to our budgetary meetings too. And planning and, you know, and discuss it and say, you know, there's been some concerns and not, not only the Lions Club itself, but other, other people that I'm sure have had concerns on it, so.
I guess when digital signs get cheaper, it might be an option to look at because then you can jazz it up as well and then show your sponsorship through that and your advertising. That way it clears the fence. You know, there's options to look at, but it's got to be cost effective too.
Absolutely.
You know.
As more support comes, again, this is a new program for us. Uh, especially, we, we've been advertising at the arena for a long time, but this is a new program that we've done. Like you guys know the changes that we've made at the arena with the sponsorship in ICE and the boards and some of those things. The pool was brand new. We didn't used to advertise at all there. So this is brand new, so it will evolve. So I think Tom has a very valid point to bring it up during the planning. When you're talking to Chris about the, you know, goals and things for, uh, community services that he can be brought up for discussion. Is there any ideas as this grows? You know, how, how many do you put on? How far around the building do you go? When, when do you cap it? And, and that opens it up for bigger discussion for sure in the future.
You know, but, but I think, you know, a response back to the, uh, Lions Club with the stats of what it generates. And, um, so that it can show that there is a it's a generation to that which reduces the, the burden to the taxpayers. And both county and town taxpayers, because we do share the, the expenses, so.
I'd be happy to write a response on behalf of council based on your conversation.
But again, I, I think it's something that we should probably bring back to our planning and our budgetary.
I'll also put a note on there for Chris to bring up for discussion.
You know, so that, um, you know, the new counselors have an opportunity to hear the concerns or questions, so.
You don't need a, a motion to respond.
No, you can receive this for information and then I will, I, you can if you want to, but I, but I, I will respond on your behalf.
Okay, cool.
I make a motion to receive your information.
Okay, great, thank you. Any discussion on Cole's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question of favor. Close. Seeing none, seeing none. Okay. Okay, moving on to the cash statement. Everybody's got an opportunity to read this over and any questions or?
The reason why you're getting a met back-to-back meeting was all because of cancellation of the, uh, this second meeting in August, so this, this catches you right up to date, um, to the end of August.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I forgot what mush stands for. For the life of me, I could not remember. Sorry.
I don't, it's a, it's a municipal account through, uh, the ATV with guaranteed rates.
Yeah. Thank you.
I don't remember what every letter of mush stands for either.
You told me once and I, and I thought, where is that in there? And I could not remember.
Okay, so those are the accounts that we have in that investment. Any questions on Tom? Lyle?
To make the motion to accept the cash statement. Period ending August 31st, 2025.
Great, thank you. Any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, questions in favor? Close. Seeing none, it's carried unanimously. Okay, year to date summary.
Very little change from the, the July, uh, again, nothing really stands out unless you have something caught your eye. It's, uh, we're in good shape for where we're supposed to be for this time of year.
Uh, just a question regarding tourism, not really related to this. When, when does it cool season?
Right away.
At the end of this month?
I have a Karen's done yesterday.
Yeah, today or tomorrow. I think he was doing inventory today.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I believe they were doing inventory and it may have been partially closed. They had somebody in, but he, he did mention that they had a pretty good sale this afternoon from opening the doors, so they were doing inventory, so I believe today was the last.
Okay, any else on, uh, statement here? If not, entertain motion. Okay, cool. Any discussion on Cole's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question of those in favor. Close. Seeing none, it's carried unanimously. Okay, bylaws. Council procedure bylaw amendment number 1492 dash C25.
As council is aware, Bill 50 received criminal offense, canceled the, uh, all of our code of conduct bylaws, so uh, we didn't have to do anything inside there. We just had to pull it from our active bylaw list because it's now written into the MGA. But they also did send out a note that should we have it referenced in any of our other documents, that we shouldn't have those documents. So I went through all of our policies, everything. The only one that very specifically mentioned the code of conduct was our procedural bylaw. And it was one line under 4.6 that stated to a year of code of conduct established by council under section, uh, 14611 of the municipal government act, which no longer exists because they repealed it. So, uh, what I've done is done a simple one-page amendment that just leaves 4.6 and re, uh, renumbers four, seven to four, nine, uh, to be in sequential order. And then we consolidated with our current bylaw. So what I've done is, uh, removed 4.6, put removed and renumbered, and then the amendment in that will be part of the consolidation should council be agreeable to that. And with this bylaw, you can do all three readings in a single meeting if you, if you'd like.
Two things. First, does that code of conduct have come off the wall or can we still let it hang?
That code of conduct was done at the Alberta Municipalities years ago and it's not in bylaw. It's just something you agreed to do, so yes.
I like it.
Yes, yes, it, it can remain. And as you remember, when Alberta Municipalities came, uh, came for their visit, the question was asked if this goes through, will there be a template for code of conducts? Not done in bylaw, but something that councils can agree to, to, uh, to participate in. They said they would look into that.
So, but my second one was, isn't it, why would they take the code of conduct away when they don't have something to replace it yet?
They, the replacement is, it'll be dealt with at a ministerial level. So should a conflict happen in council, it's on hand, the Minister of Municipal Affairs will be involved.
Yeah, so it might not be written, but it's perceived as the issue.
Yes.
Great, Richard.
I'll, um, make the recommendation that council give, uh, council procedural bylaw amendment number 1492 dash C25, first reading.
Okay, Richard moves first reading. Any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question of favor. Opposed. Seeing none, it's carried. Second reading. Cole. Any discussion on Cole's motion for the second reading? Hearing none, I'll call a question of favor. It's carried unanimously. So do we have to do introduction to third?
You have to do a, you have to do an introduction for the third.
Introduction to third, Judy? Oh, sorry, cool. Judy moves the introduction. Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question of favor. It's carried. Okay, third reading. Thank you, Lyle. Um, it was third. Any discussion on Lyle's motion for third reading? Hearing none, I'll call a question of favor. Thank you, Judy. It's carried. Thank you very much, everybody. So we've removed that, so we can hopefully not get in trouble with that one coming up. Moving on to the second annual Santa Claus run. Last year was so successful there.
It was very successful. They've, uh, they're very excited about putting it on again. Uh, again, fingers crossed, it'll a little bit better weather than last year for sure, but, uh, so they've, uh, Chris wanted to get everything in early, uh, and really all they're asking for is the closure of that First Avenue, uh, from Center Street to First Street North. Which I believe we closed last meeting as well, but we made a joke that maybe it should be on a standing temporary closure, but, uh, it is one of our major routes in town. But anyway, they, it's, it's there for, uh, closure from 10 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. for the Santa Claus run. And again, there, uh, it was very successful last year and they're only building on that this year, so.
Judy.
First off, I, I thought the weather was perfect because it seemed really like Christmas.
It was a lot like Christmas.
And on the other hand, I'd like to make a rev recommendation that council approves the recreation department's request for a temporary street closure of First Avenue from Center Street to First Street North on November 22nd, 2025. From 10 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. for the Santa Claus by K. Runenbach.
Great, thank you. Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question of favor. Close. Seeing none, it's carried unanimously. Okay, now, October the 25th, regular meeting of council cancellation.
October 2025.
Oh, sorry.
I, I do apologize for the, uh, how ambiguous this, uh, report is, but it had a lot to do with the nomination process that ended today. If we didn't have enough nominations, then we would have had to extend. If we had too many, well, not too many, but if we had more than the required number, we would have had to have an election, which would have been on the 20th. So, uh, trying to figure out which meeting to cancel was based on what happened today. And so as everybody's aware, we received only enough nominations to fill the positions, so if nobody withdraws, uh, before tomorrow at noon, we'll be claiming. So based on that, uh, with everybody being claiming tomorrow afternoon, uh, we can set the order meeting quite a bit earlier. And of course, I set the order meeting, so, uh, with that, October 14th seems like the proper date to do it because it falls in line with regularly scheduled meetings. Of course, that one is on a Tuesday because of the, uh, Thanksgiving weekend. But, uh, if we could do the order meeting, if I could call that on that second, we can do the mandatory training and do the oath of office and the new council will be up and running and be able to reg, uh, deal with regular discussions at the October 27th meeting, so.
It's disappointing that there isn't an election.
It is.
It is.
Mainly because I spent money on signs all four years ago and still haven't.
You're on my base, you.
I like the deep town hall debate.
Yeah, it's, it's
It is nice.
It's part of the process to, uh,
I agree.
have debate and have, kind of engage with people, so I don't know, it's disappointing.
I just wish people, it just seems like, you know, like Lyle put on line about get engaged and, uh, you know, get involved and and George Lee was reading that to me this morning. Thank you very much for that, by the way. And, um, I was thinking about this and I thought, you know, when somebody comes up and chews on your ear and you want to say, you know, you should have put your name on that, in that ballot, you know, to get, put your name up for election. I, it just, it annoys you because, you know, there's so much to learn here and there's, and it's, it's a big responsibility, but it is, it is good. I mean, it's, I enjoy it. I mean, it is enjoyable.
Well, and another drawback is the potential of issues not being brought to council because there's no election forum to do it, even though there is. There's a town hall every year, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know how you, I mean, other than having something that's really burning in the community of a debate issue, it's, it seems though obviously the public is happy with what's going on and, and willing to let it slide to be great, so. But anyway, back to the October the 14th is what's recommended now. Go ahead, Lyle.
I'll make the recommendation that council cancel the regular meeting of town Vulcan council scheduled for October 14th, 2025 to allow for the inaugural organization meeting of council to be held 7 p.m. that evening.
Okay. Any discussion on Lyle's motion? So the counselors that are not here right at the moment, Barbara and Will and, and Lyle that's not coming back, um, they're still counselors until?
They are counselors until the others that you elected, so that'll be tomorrow then.
Okay.
So, um, aside from your motion that's on the floor, I, I will also at the order meeting, uh, discuss a recognition of the ones that have finished their terms.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so anything else on this Lyle's motion? You now call a question of favor. Close. Seeing none, it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to committee reports. We have five written ones there for you. The first one is the, uh, Vulcan District Waste Commission. Is there any questions on the May 28th meeting? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we'll go to SCS's minutes for June the 19th. Okay, no questions on that one. The Food Bank for June the 19th. Okay, seeing none on that one. The Flying Club of August the 19th.
Short speech.
Yeah.
This was.
Okay, uh, the Fourth Attention and Retract, Attraction and Retention Committee meeting, minutes of September the 9th.
Easy credit thing.
Yeah. Okay, no questions on that one. The Lover Board. On the September 17th.
I think those glasses will be amazing. The one that has little camera on it, whatever it is. There is a cult. That's on there, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't either. Yodel player. Yodel. Y-O-T-O.
Okay, any questions on any of those five? Not some of those to move on to the cloud, uh, Judy. Okay, any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question of favor. Opposed. Seeing none, it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to verbal reports. Council magics.
Uh, as always, it's on here, I had the attraction retention community meeting on September, uh, the 9th. And then on, uh, September the 16th, I had a flying club meeting, which was longer than the one in August. Um, we did have the, received the resignation from the Vice President, but the people that were in attendance, we did have a, a good productive meeting. Everyone had, uh, cooled their heads and were trying not to find all the negative in what's going on, but try to find some positive. And I think the Flying Club is, at least at that meeting, is, is, uh, moving forward. So, uh, in a positive direction, so, uh, I, I hope things go well.
Okay, any questions for Lyle? If not, thank you, sir. Council, there are little.
I really haven't had, um, any meetings since our last one and, uh, just, uh, it's pretty quiet. Everybody's kind of quiet right now, so not much going on right now.
Okay, um, any questions for Richard? If not, uh, call a question.
Nope.
No, no. Um, for Will's not here. Um, he's assuming. No, no. Um, for Will's not here, um, he's, assuming he's probably had a fire call, so we'll move on to Judy then.
So on September, September eighteenth, I had a FCS S board meeting, and, um, on Dawn's report, it's got the ecosystem project refers, that they're part of, refers to learnings that were collected and correlated by the Alberta Association of Gerontology. All of the communities that participated in the case studies were chosen because they exemplified collaboration. And so, um, Healthy Aging Alberta's role is to help identify, um, our communities as shining examples, to make introductions and provide them a platform for sharing at the sub summit. So Dawn and Angie are, are presenting at the Healthy Aging because we are one of the communities that have great collaboration in our community and work with each other really close, so, so that was good to hear, um, when they give you clues. And also, under Christie, um, she works with outreach for the seniors, and she said the outreach now receives referrals from many varied sources, and the most recent one is from Bylaw. So instead of tickets, residents that are unable to maintain their yards are given our number to get assistance and assessing support. So kids will go over, mow lawns or, so it was really nice to hear that the Bylaw officer and FCS S made a work for those that are incapable of getting that done. Um, the youth center, we have a new youth coordinator. She had a really good, uh, summer. There was a bunch of, uh, camps put on in, in all the villages this year, so some of them, it was their first year, so it, uh, not as many kids, but it will need growth from here, so that was positive. Um, and then Mountain Energy, I think that's one by Hossi Arolaria. They wanted to get, donate ten thousand dollars and they wanted it to go to the youth. So what they bought was one of those new basket, uh, basketball, I think it's electronically keeps your scores. And then there's also two arcade games that they bought with all that. So if you ever want to see what it's like, you're always welcome to go down into the youth center and have a look around. And, uh, due to the changes at Rainbow Society, they hold the grant money for the social, social prescribing, which houses our link worker. And, uh, Rainbow has requested that FCS S take over the signing of the financial contract. So this came to us just the other day, and that needed to be signed right away, so, um, this grant is for the next three years, so it's big bucks. So Dawn already has more than enough on her plate, so the board felt, no, you can't take on anymore. You're already pushed to the max. Why would we have you do that? So what we felt was a good, uh, move is to request that the Vulcan County Health and Wellness Foundation oversee this. I mean, the link worker works there, so we're hoping that's the way it will go because it's big money and we don't want to lose it, but we need somebody else to step up to the plate. It can't always keep coming to FCS S. So hopefully that works. Also, on the eighteenth, we had the food bank right after. And I had reported to you before that we had purchased that two thousand and five handicap caravan, Dodge caravan. Good news is that, um, we're happy to report that this has been paid in full by Brent, so that's done. So, you know, sometimes you gotta take faith and jump in and, and get it, and so we were lucky there. Uh, hampers, oh, oh, there was also, uh, Lori and Angie, I think, went over High River Golf Course, won a tournament, and, um, they wanted to give money to the Vulcan Food Bank, so they were over there promoting the food bank, and they made seventeen hundred fifty dollars. So well worth the date. Uh, hampers for June, um, there was forty-eight, that's up from twenty twenty-four, everything's up. July, they did fifty-eight hampers, August, they did fifty-six, and as of the eighteenth, they've already done fifty-one. So we're a little nervous because it's not, you know, our big donations come more in the fall. We did just get a, a donation from the Lions, so we greatly appreciate that, so that will help fill the, but it's just a hard time. Everybody's busy and there's harvest and kids going back to school, and sometimes the donations go down a bit. But we, we make it work however we can. We do thank God for the cost of recipe food, so, well, I didn't say costly. Through the Foods Bank Alberta grant, we were able to replace the old counter and the two sinks that, when you come in the back, they were there, and they weren't up to health standards. So, um, with the grant that we got from the Food Banks Alberta, we purchased a stainless steel, three compartment sink, sink, and also a hand washing sta- station that's right there, so you can wash, and then you're not contending anything to go down the line. So this is, um, long awaited for upgrade. Uh, transportation, I can report, we had two full-time drivers and we now have two casual. So everything's been moving really smooth and we're not having to deal with another entity. So it was a lot of work, but we got it done and, and it's working well, so everything's been positive and, um, July and August, respectively, they made twelve hundred thirty dollars in money. So that money's going into a savings account, and that will be used for either buying a new van when we need it or any big repairs or something, or if people just were desperate, need food, we can always pull from their food. And, um, Angie was worried about the subsidized rates that we were charging, and she just wants, she phoned a lot of people and figured out what rates are good. We subsidized fifty dollars in July and two hundred and seventy-five in August, so, um, Angie figures this shows that their rates are fair. So we're charging. Um, the RDN and Client Services stats, June, there were sixty families, uh, dealt with, and that was a hundred and three individuals. July was fifty-four families, eighty-seven individuals, and August was eighty-three families and a hundred and thirty individuals. Supports include, um, seniors are still doing their taxes. There is eight people with eight, with ten years and over that they hadn't done taxes, and so they shut off their benefits. If you're not going to report, they don't know you're, are you dead or you? So, um, some of those have taken up to two hundred days to solve, trying to get through and back file everything, but it's coming. So that's just another thing on there, just to do now. Apologize, I got dry mouth tonight. And H, I think, I don't know if you all heard, that they're changing the program, so everybody's got to come back in. And we would like to set up, uh, we didn't vote on it, but a computer or phone lines for them to call because if FCS S calls for all those people all the time, they don't have time for, and we're going to request that a social service person come down to Vulcan once every so often because we are doing the government's job and we don't get any extra money from them, so. You just, we're going to have to start pushing back a bit, which is unfortunate. And, and housing, the rent's high and the houses to rent are hard to find, and if you rent the houses in Champaign, have now been condemned, so. There is, uh, in August, there were a total of twenty-nine people living unhoused, five families living in campgrounds in Vulcan and Lomond, two people living in motels, and two persons moved to live with family in Calgary and One and Lomond. So good news is three rent subsidy apps have been approved over the last three months, so we're, we're making gains. Yes.
Um, those numbers, uh, they just, they've gone up considerably. I haven't analyzed where it's, uh.
But rent goes up, and then if you can't afford your other bills, like something, something's got to give somewhere, so. And Rhonda works for Bylaw, trying to find a different avenue, and that's what RDN, uh, read rural development. So it's a work in progress. It's a lot of people to go through that door every day. But we've got a great staff, so hopefully everybody stays. And, oh, I had another one. What did I do with that one? Back here, before September eighteenth. September tenth. Kim and myself, uh, attended a C webinar hosted by Alberta Muni, so that's that one that Will brought to us, about the town taking on loans, people being able to, uh, degree energy and then put it on their taxes. Uh, it was very informative. I wasn't cheerful at going in, but I was a little bit more positive once I, I heard it. There is, um, this program allows, like I already said, so you can finance up to a hundred percent of finance costs up to twenty-five years. And, um, for residential, it's fifty thousand is the top that you can borrow. Uh, one billion for non-residential, three hundred thousand for farmland. So there's shared fees, up to five percent of project capital costs. Example, if there's twenty thousand dollars spent on solar panels, the event three P would be a thousand bucks. Uh, town pays Alberta Muni's some service costs, startup admin costs could be up to around fifteen thousand. And Alberta Muni does prep a program, engaging contractors, review of our docs, they do templates for the Bylaw and sample marketing plans and program work. So they also ask can municipalities, uh, I don't know. Oh, can municipalities do this without the support of FCM? And Sterling is one of the munis that do do this on their own, so, um, Kim can speak further on this, but at least. And then, um, projects include furnaces. If new ductwork is required, sometimes it can be paid for and sometimes that come out of your pocket, so I guess it depends on how much you're borrowing. Windows and doors, solar systems, if you need to repair your roof because of the solar systems before the panels are installed, some of this cost could be covered, but it's not. So there's some things to know about those water heaters, insulation, air sealing, air and ground source heat pumps. So that loan can be paid out at any time, no early payout penalties on your taxes, so you can pay that out. And this, this, what I really liked was it does not affect the town's borrowing power, it's a separate entity, so that's not part of the borrowing. So I thought that very interesting, but I know Kim will have some.
Okay.
I'm just following up on that, Judy. I was at a meeting, uh, with the Alberta Real Estate Association, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and that was actually on our agenda because I'm on the forms and practice committee, and we're figuring out whether that affects when people go to sell their properties. Is that going to be registered on title, those loans, and how it impacts?
It's on your property taxes. So when they come to buy, if I come to buy your house and you've done renovations, we can make an agreement, but you fix the house up. And so I don't mind finishing paying maybe for the windows because, or doors or the solar system, I want the solar panels, and you already did it. So I can take over that, or you can come to a deal, maybe you pay half and maybe half, but you're paying for it for the years that you've lived in it.
Well, I just.
But it would just follow the property taxes. It's not on, it remains right?
Yes.
But it'll be registered against the?
Yeah, it would have to be registered someplace. So it's, uh, it's on the tax rule side?
Right.
So it is the same as a local improvement.
Local improvement, yeah.
Uh, what you're doing is you're,
Just deferring.
you're giving them a loan through the taxation.
Yeah. They're going to be talking to the government.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Any other questions for Judy? Thank you, and Barbara is not here tonight, so we'll move on to Mr. Dunn.
I haven't had any meetings, and I haven't had much engagement because I've been in the glass prison, as I call it. So I have a couple coming up, and I'm hoping if I can't make it, that Tom will fill in for both, I guess, and just keep everybody informed.
Okay, any questions for Lyle? If not, uh, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to me, on the twelfth, we had a SEWA executive, um, they're still working tirelessly on this. Well, we had one on the twelfth, one on the nineteenth, um, to move these projects forward. The one at Newell is, um, they figure hopefully that they'll go out for tender in the next, uh, couple of weeks to the end of the month, or the, the middle of the next month, um, to purchase the equipment. And then on the seventeenth, we had a solid waste committee meeting, and some of it'll come up a little bit later. Um, and then on the nineteenth, again, like I said, SEWA, and with the SEWA one, um, executive via, um, Ms. Rubin, who is a senior, um, partner in, uh, Global Green, he was there again and explained, you know, how the process is going. They're working right now with, um, Camore, um, Banff, um, Big Horn to put a facility in there. And, uh, Kim Craig and myself are working on a group of people from the south to hopefully do the third one there. Um, and the solid waste commission asked if since Brooks has gone a different direction, whether that will bring a, theoretically, a fourth one on, and he said it will all depend on the cost. They've got people that are interested in investing, but, you know, it will all depend on how things fall together. So they have a couple templates, um, that were developed through, um, Newell, and so hopefully we'll see those templates soon and, uh, be able to bring them back to the, the partners to see if somebody's in there. But again, you know, there are some municipalities that if this could go through, could lower their tipage by over a hundred dollars a ton. If it goes through. Um, and then on the twenty-fifth, I was invited to go to South Groves, um, in Merritt, McGrath, to go and, and speak on the SEWA project. And then on the twenty-sixth, we have our normal SEWA meeting coming up on September twenty-sixth. And that's it for me. Most of this has been the SEWA stuff. Any questions for? Okay, if not, somebody wish to move our, Richard, our council reports? Any discussion on Richard's motion? Any, uh, question, call of favor? Posed, seen none, it's carried. Okay, moving on to activity management reports.
Everybody's had a chance to see the report. Everything, but the first one's done, and, uh, here in a couple of weeks, I'll ask you if you would like to remove that one. So I can move on to my CAO report. Pretty straightforward. You've, I'm still working on that conceptual scheme, uh, went back, uh, through orders, back to the developer. Uh, the developer did not like some of the changes, so, uh, the consultant's working with him on wording. Uh, I spoke with them again today. We're getting closer, hopefully have something, uh, by the end of October, beginning of November. So it's still moving forward. It just slowed down a little bit, and it really, it's really falling on terminology of phasing and some of those things. It's, it's not anything major. It's just how things are described and how it's recommended for moving forward, so. So we're still working on that, uh. As you all know, who have been through the doors, working on nomination packages, making sure that, uh, all that information's out there, trying to, uh, I made lots of phone calls again, trying to talk to some of our residents to see if there's any interest in participating, you know. Got lots of maybes and not as many coming through the door as I had hoped, but, uh, but again, that, uh, that process, is complete again for another four years, so we'll, we'll go from there. Uh, I've been working on this Apple, uh, device manager, uh, software for the, for the existing iPads to do the release on them. And the one that I did, couldn't get back into it. It locks the, uh, similar to Judy's, it locks it up for long term, so we might have to work with Apple to try to get these things. They're registered in the town, so we're going to be able to keep using them like nothing happened, but others, two of the four that are remaining, two of them aren't working, so again, we'll deal with that through the technology side of our, uh, and we'll try to get these things cleaned up so that they can be your own personal ones rather than, you know, by the town of Vulcan, so. We'll get that, I'll continue working on that, uh, do the staff recognition stuff, uh, rec facility. Uh, we've started, uh, conversations with the county, getting those numbers on, uh, where we've been over the last couple of years, so we can do the extension to the, uh, recreation agreement. And the invitation from the county CAO is, uh, once the Recreation Board reviews that they don't seem to, uh, think that there's, uh, there won't be much discussion around that the operational costs are what they are. Uh, we're going to see a little bit of an increase, obviously, because of the extra staff member at the, uh, the arena. We let them know that that wouldn't be the numbers that they have, but here's what it is going forward. They were completely acceptable without, so, so far from administration. And again, it has to go for review, and, and what, what it suggested is they'll bring it to, uh, give it to the county for approval and then bring it back to the town for approval, because once you know that they've approved it, it's very, you know, very easy for us to move forward and do the, do the other. Uh, lots of clarification on the, uh, elected officials training for, because they have, uh, as some of you are aware. they've made the training for elected officials mandatory, which is excellent. It didn't make much sense before that we had to offer it to you, but you didn't have to take it. So it's nice that they did make it mandatory, but the timelines they put on it are a little hard to achieve because now you have to have it before you do your open office. So in an instance like we have for an acclamation, we were very on the ball. Signed you guys up for training for November first, but if you're all acclaimed tomorrow, now you have to wait till November first before you can receive training, which means you can't do anything till the month of October. So I've got some clarification on how we can provide that training. It looks like myself as a CAO could do an overview that gets all the points that we will be legislatively compliant inside the MGA. I can orient you, do that training. And then you guys can make motion to do more comprehensive training afterwards. So that'll be the one that we've booked for you, so I can get you there, which is why we canceled the meeting. We will get everybody that has been acclaimed, trained and through the organization meetings. So should any business arise, you can actually make motions of that and continue doing business. So there was a lot of calls between civil affairs about it. Quite funny, to Judy's point about the code of conduct. They amended everything, including the election act to make sure that everything for the code of conduct are gone. And they left one line in the local authorities' election act where it says that councillors will abide by the code of conduct. Not my point to bring it out too open, but I might remind them that their own documents aren't completely compliant at this point. So yeah, did the MGA reviews with the code of conduct, which really actually helped because I was dealing with municipal affairs on that as well. Met with golf course, executive member about the councillor appointments. Now the golf course loan is there, is done, whether there's value there. And so I want council to have a good conversation with the committee appointments about the value of being there because they see value in it even though there isn't a loan on the line. We're kind of afraid that now the loans that council might just pull out of participating. So we're at the discussion. I know Judy's participated on that before, so probably look at you for some guidance on that as well.
I can just say, I've had people ask, because we haven't had our town.
Present?
Yeah. And the president came to me and then other people. And I knew you would talk to Aaron because I saw him at the side door and I tried to encourage him to put an application over here.
I did as well.
And he told me, you know, maybe just whenever they need us. But some of the people that I talked to that are unique meetings and that said, I think we need the town on there. So I, yeah, he said to council.
Yeah. So I just mentioned that I would bring it up during discussion for council appointments. From that side, community members, we had lots of questions about the election in the airport. Questions on the airport with the straight lanes and just frequency of flying and all that stuff. Obviously tended the, well, I was away for a day and a half with sick youth in my house. And then the meetings of interest was the clean energy improvement program. Again, very thorough review, but it also provided much of the information that we had done our research on and presented to council before. One of the interesting ones for questions, Judy mentioned the village of Sterling. They did theirs all on their own, which was great, great success story, but they also haven't had anybody participate in it. So they have the program in place, but nobody's actually taken a moment and done that. So that was more Judy's heard. My questions were more on the legislative side. Who's doing this? Are the smaller communities being successful with those sort of things? And there's, it's a valuable program if you can do it. Again, not everybody from the other side, talking to Lyle and Matt on our real estate and those sort of things. Improvements that you make on your house, they might want you to pay for when you sell your house. So that was a nice thing that we found out was it can, like a local improvement, can be paid out at any time. So because it is a tax, essentially it goes on our books as a tax on that property. One of the things that can be done, like a local improvement tax, is the new owner could negotiate whether that be paid off in full or they, like Judy said, continue to pay on that. One of the big things is that slowed it down, they said, was on the solar energy side, was some of these companies that are subsidizing it as opposed to the communities. I think Tom participated in one of those programs where the payback is inside the billing instead of taking the loan for it. But Judy's also right. They touched on everything and what made it a little scary is you had to make application. So should you want to do your entire HVAC system in your house and you're going to take a loan from the municipality to do it, there's portions of it that they might not approve. So if you can't afford to do it on your own, that's a pretty scary risk on that. And then the last question that I asked was about, was a question that was brought up here, was about the local vendors. And Judy touched on it as well with them is this promotes, they marketed as promoting your local electricians, all of those things. But when we said that we don't have any in the program, they said, well, but Calgary and Lethbridge would be local to you. And they didn't, Calgary and Lethbridge have several that are. Now, having said that, if you have a program in place, the local plumbers and electricians and that could become part of the program. So it also, by us putting the program in place, also works with them to, as a benefit.
Sign up for it.
Yeah, they could sign up for it, go through the approval process. But the call's notes is Alberta municipalities do ninety percent of the work on this. Should council put a bylaw in place to do it, but there are some startup costs. They gave like said fifteen thousand dollars to the program, starting out, out of the town's pocket. And then, of course, you have to fund the loans. So we either take a loan ourselves or we fund it through reserves with the way that you're planning. So and I believe they suggest a close to four hundred thousand dollars is a starting point. So you would either want four hundred thousand dollars in reserve or to use your line of credit or a loan for use now. So this was about the number that you know. So that was the information. It was open to all council to participate if it's something that council would like to further add in the future. That was the whole motion that was put forward was to participate in that to learn more. So if we want to move forward with it, we can bring it forward.
They had also said, you thought that might be interesting if we surveyed our residents.
See if they would.
See if they're interested. I personally would like to get my back windows done. And so, but that's a lot, but it's not a lot.
And would you borrow for it or?
I would put it on my taxes. I think that's a great idea because then I can afford monthly.
The only difference is too, is like a few years ago, there was a huge discussion about, you know, our taxes are so expensive in our community. So when a Realtor is selling a piece of property, they look at your tax base and say, well, that piece of property's tax base is so high. And so it became an election issue of how can we lower our taxes? And, you know, there's only one taxpayer and again, you know. So even on local improvements, there's, you know, that huge discussion that, you know, are you just pushing the cost down the road on to the owner? Or like you said, do you allow the future owner to pay for a portion of that improvement? So I appreciate what you're saying. It's one of those real touchy subjects that, you know.
And you as the seller and me as the buyer could come to an agreement and?
You betcha. No, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And it's no different than our local improvements.
Yeah, and that was the exact selling point on our local improvement. If you, for an example, were ninety years old and we approached you about local improvement and tax and you said yes to it, you might pay for it for two years and the next owner's going to pay for it for the remaining twenty-five. And that argument is very valid. If you're paying for a water and sewer line that somebody's going to use twenty years from now, why wouldn't they pay for it twenty years from now?
Yeah, and same with the windows or whatever. Like you said, it does increase. And there are some green initiatives that, you know, you can follow under the CHIP program, you know, you know, the Canadian homeowners improvement program. And it's at a zero percent interest rate too. And I don't know if it's still alive and well or not, but.
I haven't heard about it.
That's where my solar came from, was under the CHIP. It was, so for fifteen years, there was no interest on my loan.
Our CAO's wife could help us there.
Anyway.
So anyway, that was the clean energy improvement program. Again, because you all have the chance to participate if it's something that you would like to bring forward back to council, we can do that. But at this point, you've got the information that you can hold over. And again, they do this a couple of times. So if others would like to participate again, I can find out when they do another online session and send out that petition again as well. Then I've also attended elections Albera, election database training over and over and over. They've made quite a few changes. There's the red elected, the register of electors, which should be have an election. We're going to have to use going forward. And it's quite interesting because I had to sign an agreement. Only certain people can go in to look at it here, not to use it for anything about the elections, those sort of things. So I did a test as part of the training and brought up the thing and started going through the names. Of course, it's a FOIP issue because it's got people's names, ages, all of those things that are on an elected thing. Interesting one, I was looking for mistakes, things that I know in our community because we're small enough, we're in a city, you wouldn't know these things. I looked at ours, we had several on there of residents that had passed away. My name's on there twice because of the two residents that I've had in the last ten years, some things like that. So it's pretty interesting. About, that one had fifteen hundred, I believe, fifteen hundred and seventy-five registered voters in our community. I don't remember ever having more than eight hundred come to an election. So at most we've had, in my experience, we've had about fifty percent based upon those kinds of numbers participating in elections. But quite interesting. Hopefully we'll be able to get to use it in the future. On the other side, the changes that Bill Fifty put in place for the election were also very scrambled to try to put in place because of course they all took it back to September first with the changes to the MGA. Of course, nomination day being the twenty-second. They changed the nominations where if we didn't have enough, the former, we had to open it up for every day until we received enough nominations to either hold an election or a claim. And if you only had enough, people couldn't withdraw their nomination if you only had enough. Now they've made it so anybody can withdraw anytime after twenty-four hours of closing nominations. And if you don't have enough on nomination day, then you have to open it for five more days. So six days in total. And you open it from ten o'clock, tell them even on every day, but you can't include Saturday and Sunday. So it takes you right through to the next Monday that you have to have it open. And you don't, you can't close nominations even when you receive the number. You have to have it open every day and receive as many nominations as command. Which if we open for another week, we might get another ten nominations, who knows? But anyway, we don't get to do that this year. But trying to make sure that I understood that a hundred percent, being the only returning officer. And yeah, we got through it. I did also on the elections act side, got notification that our palliser rep was acclaimed as well or will be acclaimed tomorrow. So there was only one nomination and it was accepted. So that will be claimed, so there won't be an election for the school board either. So we just won't have an election at all.
Okay.
So that's very quick.
Any questions on Kim's report? If not, maybe? Move it. The administration reports. Any discussion on Judy's motion? Any now called question, paper closed. Seeing that is carried now. Okay, so we have two items to go into. We have camera on the FOIP under section. Okay, so we have two items to go into, we have camera on the FOIP, under section. So we have two items to go into, we have camera on, the FOIP, under section.
Just to be able, it takes a second for that to go away.
Sure. Okay. So we're back in. Karen and I came back in at...
Eight fifty one.
Eight fifty one. And you're gonna make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Judy moves us back in. Any discussion on Judy's motion? Karen, call questions in favor or oppose. It's carried. Okay, so the waste one with EPR is just an informational item, so there's no motion on it. The evaluation, we need two motions. Karen, did you, or Kim, did you have one, a couple canned ones?
Well, you can do it all as one motion. That is what we've done in the past. And the motion that he used last year, if acceptable, would be that council approves the 2025 annual CAO evaluation that's presented, and directs the mayor to review the evaluation with the chief administrative officer, Kim Fong, and for Mayor Grab to destroy the individual evaluation surveys. Don't make your motion.
Okay, Richard moves that. Any discussion on Richard's motion? Mary and Nan, I'll call questions in favor. Okay, so before we have the last motion, since Will's not here, I personally would like to thank every member of our council, you know, Will and Barbara's not here, but thank everybody for, you know, the great four years that we've had. And like we talked about earlier too, there's such a learn, here huge learning curve, not only for counselors that are brand new, but counselors that have been here for a while. And I think it's been great. And I thank everyone in the bottom of my heart, you know, that it's been great. And so those that aren't coming back, and wish you the best. And those that are coming back, and wish you the best. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to say that I personally am proud of you. I appreciate your leadership and your honesty with us as council. So thank you.
Okay, while you're waiting, thank you. Okay, so I'm open for the last motion.
Do you want to call Will?
Judy moves us in turn.
I looked at everybody and everybody, mm.